I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is December 12, 2024, and time being 7:00 p.m. Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Bourne TV. If anyone is audio or visually recording, please acknowledge at this time. Seeing none. Zoom meeting ID is 896-8321-3172. The passcode is 612-012. Dial from your location is 1-929-205-6099. Meeting minutes of 11:24.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minute says red.
Second.
Motion by... Come by this. Any other question or comments from the board? I'll start on this side. Corinne?
No. She's all obscene. I wasn't here.
You weren't here?
Right.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
As the chair votes yes. Lot released, 11 Carlton Road, lot number 10, map 30.2, parcel 179.1. Come up to the lectern and introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Leanne Bremen. My maiden name was Gardner. And my sister and I bought this... Can you hear? Of course you can.
Oh, yeah.
This is right here. My sister and I had purchased the lot from our father, David Gardner. And there happens to be a... We need the lot released. So the 2024 assessor card says that it's a drainage easement for the subdivision. Now, this was all developed back in 1969 and 1972. My dad had developed all of these lots in this area right here. I don't have copies for everyone. There are about 50 lots. And this was the first lot... This was the last lot that he never released. So we would like to get that last lot released so that we could possibly build a small house up there. It's 23,200 square feet. And it's actually not a drainage easement. I'll give a quick history on that. Back in... My father had written a letter back in October 12 of 1972. And he had said there are presently remaining 18 lots in the subdivision available for use. I request that six of these lots be held pending completion of the subdivision. These would be numbers seven, and it includes number 10, 11, 16, 17, and 25. He said the... And then he said, "I request release of the remaining 12 lots numbered this," and he numbers them. "The remaining work to be done in the subdivision is estimated by Mr. Pellegrini." And I don't know who Mr. Pellegrini was. I'm not sure if he was a contractor or if he was on the plan.
He was the DPW director for the town of Bourne.
Thank you. "The remaining work to be done in the subdivision is estimated by Mr. Pellegrini to be $1,600, the combined market value of the six lots," and he gives a number. So my dad then wrote, "I grant to the town an easement on lot number 10 of 35 feet depth from the property line for drainage. I further will install a culvert from basin located corner of Carlton Road and Carl E. Gardner Roads to town basin located corner Carlton and Eel Pond Roads. I further will install a basin at southerly lot line of the 27..." Lot 27. The last sentence is... Well, he says, "this action at the request of Mr. Pellegrini." So my father had never made that easement. He had applied for an order of conditions. My confusion is, is it a request or is it a suggestion? So back in... This was back in 1986. Our dad had applied for a notice of intent that I have right here. And he... On the lot, there was no easement on the plot plan of the subdivision from Newell Snow either. So there's the three lots right here. And you can see that on the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, the whole plot plan for the subdivision. But my father did want to redirect water to this culvert, you know, like what I had said before. He never did that work. He was permitted to fill it, I believe, fill, alter, grade the lot in 19... December of 1986. My father never filled the lot. There's a little bit of a depression down the bottom of it. So there's my dad standing. Then there's some standing water. And he... Instead of doing it legally by the Conservation Commission and filling in the lot within the three years, he attempted to fill the lot after that. And they had put a stop work order on the lot. So now, we had wanted to put a house up there. And we have a letter from Stephanie Fitch, because I know about Conservation Commission and all of that. And she said, "It appears right now..." Louis Gala was going to... Was starting to fill it. So she sent him an email. In April 1986, you know, 1989, 10 years later... Oh, it was 10 years later. "The owner was issued an enforcement order for attempting to fill the depression, but this time under the Bourne Wetlands Protection Bylaw, which became effective 1987." Then Stephanie said, "I did a quick..." This was back in 2022. "I did a quick site visit yesterday, August 30, 2022, and I observed standing water in the depression. Direct observation of surface water is a hydrology indicator for a wetland and should be further explored prior to any work being done in the property. Further, the lot is labeled as undevelopable as a drainage easement for the subdivision. If the area is proven by a professional to not meet the definition of an isolated vegetated wetland and was instead created for the purpose of stormwater management, the property owner has the right to maintain the stormwater management system without a permit from the Conservation Commission." So what I did was I hired Warwick and Associates to survey the whole perimeter of the lot, hired Mike Ball, an environmental scientist, to see that designated area, whether or not it was deemed a wetland. It is now deemed a wetland, a vegetated wetland. And on this... I only have two. Do you want to look at this this way or?
Sure. We can pass it.
Yeah, thank... I'm sorry. Because I didn't know I had to make copies of that.
So this area?
Yeah. And this is the lot right here. And that's Carlton Road, and Eel Pond Road is right over here.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
So this area is deemed a wetland.
Drop out. I'll set up if you want over here as well. Thank you. And I need those back.
That's the wetland. Have you seen it?
I have photos too, if you want to see photos.
Yes. I think we should.
So as you can see there as well, part of that wetland is also on the neighbor's property. So we've done everything that we can as far as the rules and regulations. So basically, we want the lot released so that we can put a house up there. But then again, we have to go through all of the regulations with the Conservation Commission, which I do understand, you know, it's 150 feet from a wetland. It's a septic system 10-foot setback. But we're trying to get a... Protect the wetland. The wetland right now, my husband and I went there. Everything's dead right now. I mean, there's a little bit of standing water right there. But I... And there's three different Latin plants.
Today, there's just a little bit of standing water?
Yeah.
There's standing water everywhere in town.
Yeah, yeah. It's actually not that bad. Here's in May of 2024 is what it looks like. So I think it's in 20 feet... 30 feet across... I'm sorry. And that's the only picture I have of that. That was from the environmental specialist, Mike Ball. Sometimes it... Even though I had said to Mike, "There's no water there. How can it be a wetland? There's no water." He said, "It's not about that because sometimes it fills up, sometimes it doesn't. It doesn't overflow. It's... There's no drainage from the street."
Yeah.
But there are three plants. There's a red maple, and then the Latin names of two other plants that they have there as well. But we want to be able to protect the wetland, of course. I mean, it's been there for years, but we still want to be able to have the lot released so that we can pursue putting a small, like, house up there to keep it in the family. Because my dad had developed that whole area for years, and we'd like to have it, like, as a homestead. And do you have any questions, anyone? Because that's what I have.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Do we have anything from the DPW checking in on the so-called easement that was granted back in '72?
I emailed him to see if he had any records, and I haven't heard back from him. So I'm still awaiting his response.
Okay.
So it's been how many years now?
No, it's since...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, at least, to him.
So...
Forty-plus years.
I just need to clarify something, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. So just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying is you've established what the wetland is. Like, you've basically tried to establish the current conditions and clarify what they are.
Yes.
With the goal of then developing plans for building that will be compliant with all the regulations around this particular...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
So now, the outstanding thing about the easement? I don't know.
I didn't... Was an analysis done to see if it was contiguous at the point of the zoning change there? Is that done?
That hasn't been done, no.
Yeah, it's not been done.
So I would be concerned about that.
I think we have to do that.
Is to make sure that it was not contiguous at any point when the zoning changed. The other is, if that is... Is an easement or proposed to be an easement, where would the water then go once this lot is developed?
Right.
So we... I would like to see some kind of drainage analysis that, you know, a proposed plan showing it being developed and where that water would go. I'm really concerned about the topography and if the neighbors or somebody further down the road would be flooded because this is being developed. Yeah. As far as I know, it hasn't, because it's always been... You have the picture of the...
Yep.
Yeah. It's... It's... I've been there three times this past year, and there's... It's the water's kind of at the same place. And even when it rains, I don't see it drain, like, draining into... I mean, I... The concern would be whether it's draining into our property.
We were talking about...
But it's not going into anyone else's property. I just wonder, when the subdivision was designed, was it designed to contain the water for that subdivision? And once you alter that, then it's going to impact the other... The other lots in the area. So that's what I'm concerned about. Would that be on the Newell Snow plan?
It's...
Because it's not on the plan.
Yeah. In the research I did, it's... We have the subdivision plan, but it doesn't show any easement for drainage or anything.
Yeah, you can see it was after-the-fact easement.
Yeah.
Right.
But it was never put in, probably, in legal terms.
Right.
But it was granted to the town. I would just wonder how much rights the town still has to that. And if they have to maintain that, that they would still have to collect the water. You know, I'm not really concerned about conservation, because I'm sure conservation would, you know, make sure that it's protected.
Well, that's the other thing, yeah. You're going to have to stay, what is it, 100 feet? 100? 150 feet away? It's 100.
Their jurisdiction is that much, but they don't have... 50 feet is what they stay away from.
Right.
You can't go near, yeah.
Yeah. So that wouldn't be my concern. First, to see if it was contiguous. Second, if they maintain the easement, then I don't have a problem with it, because then they're going to be taking on the water. But if it was to be diverted, that would be a concern.
Okay.
Corinne, can you explain what contiguous, what you mean by that?
Yeah. When a subdivision is created, they create it for the zoning at that time. And years, years down the road, will the time... Town may have changed the zoning. So if those lots are in the same ownership, whether it be direct ownership or some kind of control, it is considered to be merged as to the other lots that are contiguous to it. Even if the other lots were sold, but for the purposes of zoning, it could be considered merged. So you kind of have to do an analysis, when the zoning changed, who owned, you know, the abutting lots. It's something that engineer has done for a while. Planning used to do it quite often to make sure that there wasn't... It wasn't a merged lot. Would you... Would you be able to obtain that information from the book and page of the... Of the land court records of the whole... Of this whole development? It's kind of an analysis, what you do. You would come up with the maps, see who's the abutters. Yeah. See when... What year the zoning changed and what the ownerships were that year. So you kind of would have to go into the registry of deeds, into the assessors, into the engineering, and do an analysis through that. Okay. Who does that? Me? Or is...
It's like, we have the records in engineering.
Yeah. Engineering would do it. And then if you don't agree with it, then you could come up with your engineer or your attorney to, you know, to challenge that, if necessary. Oh, okay. I think... Yeah, okay.
David?
It seems like there's two things we're discussing here. One's the easement, which is not shown on here, so I'm a little fuzzy on where the easement is. Was the purpose of the easement just an allowance for a future pipe? Or was it actually a surface drainway that is currently draining?
Some of the paperwork that she showed, showed a pipe going across the road and then filtering into that.
That's an existing... That's a pipe that's been constructed?
I don't know if it's been constructed or not. That's the other thing.
No.
This was the... The Notice 710 had a map with it that showed a proposed culvert draining into that area.
Here's the... Here's the notice.
It's draining into the lowland. It's draining into the...
Yes.
Well, yes, draining into the wetland.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, you see that right there? Yeah.
Yes.
Are there catch basins out there? I... If you can decipher what that is. That looks like that's a catch basin there. I think he said to... He was going... My dad said he was going to add the culvert in the letter. I don't... Do you see it? Catch basin.
It would seem to be easy to tell. If you put on your mucklocks and went down in the muddy part here and see if you can find the...
We've reached out... We've reached to the board. We've reached out to the DPW director down. We're going to ask him to go out and actually check it. Do you have there's catch basins that are filtering into that?
Because I don't see... I mean, I don't know if you can tell from this aerial view. I don't see... I didn't see a catch basin at all there. I don't know why Mr. Pellegrini had even suggested something like that. Because at that time, the pictures, it was just... It was not even... There's the catch basin.
We'll go out to him.
So these were 1998. It was dry. So that's my dad standing there, 1998.
Look for the outfall.
In September, it had a little water. And then in November... So as it kind of just sat there, it didn't fill it way that way.
It's... Yeah. It's the topography is everything is pointing to that area, so.
Yes.
It's merging when the zoning changed.
Yeah. I have an area like this near my house.
It's in the same ownership.
And that you should have just filled it a long time ago.
Well, that's...
Yeah, maybe not. The salamanders like them. I mean, and that kind of part... That kind of thing is actually very useful for wildlife, let's put it that way.
Okay. I think what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to continue this. We're going to need the DPW to do an inspection. We're going to have to talk to Stephanie Fitch directly and get what her input on is. And then we'll have to do some research to see if it was contiguous back in whenever the zoning changed.
If you could do that, that would be great.
We will try to do it in-house. And like I said, if it goes against what you think, then you can hire your own engineer and try to...
Oh, I gotcha. Okay.
So we'll continue this to the next meeting in Jan... Which is last... Third week in January?
January 9?
January 9?
January 9. Okay.
Or the 20... January 23.
Oh, January 23.
Jennifer, you'll let me know, right?
Yeah. I'm going to say we're going to continue it to probably the 23rd, because with the holidays and everything else coming in, staff at town hall to do the work and everything, so.
Because I want to come... We live in Florida, so we want to move back up here, because we were hit with too many hurricanes and the tornado went right in our...
And just get a little rain here.
Do you just...
I moved up from Florida, too.
Yeah. I want to come home. I grew up on Eel Pond Road. It's like, it's time for us to come home, you know?
Yeah.
Chris, as far as the process, maybe Jen can answer this. Do they still do buildability letters? They don't do that anymore? Okay.
Usually, the landowner is responsible for hiring a land attorney who would provide and furnish a letter of buildability.
Oh, Kevin, our attorney, Kevin Clower. I... When I spoke to him, he said he was going to be here, but he has another meeting somewhere. He had said that he has no issue whatsoever after hearing all of the information here. He said, "I have no issue providing a letter of buildability to the zoning."
Okay.
Yes. And when you receive that letter, if you could forward that to planning, that would be great.
Oh, okay. So I'll do that prior to whether or not you say it's...
Yeah. Prior to January 23.
Okay. Because he had helped me a lot with all of my information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
I worked... I worked with your father a number of times.
I know your name.
Yes.
Do you know my older sister Susan? Sue Gardner? Karen? The Gardner girls?
Probably. Of course, I know all of you.
That's what... I told my husband, I said, "I know him."
Yeah.
"I know you. I know you."
From not... Not from when I was working, though, right?
No.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman. My former life. Oh, Dan?
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
To make a motion, we continue this project until January 3.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Vote, Dan. On the... Yes. Catherine?
Yes.
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 Yes. See you on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is approval, not required, plans under 4181P. Uh, One Eldridge Avenue, map 23.1, parcel 9. Do you want to... You guys want to say anything? Dawn? Dawn Bracken? Hello? I can unmute? Hello?
Wake up, Dawn.
Dawn Bracken? Okay. He's not here.
At the moment.
Everyone in town knows where One Eldridge Avenue is.
Especially me.
This was the big house on Bottom Oak Bay. When you came from Wayham, crossed the bridge, and it was a giant junkyard. And now, some great people in town have purchased it, cleaned it up, rebuilding it. And they just need to divide the land up a little bit, so. Dawn Bracken, are you on? Don't pay that bill. Any questions on the 81P?
I haven't seen it.
It's...
Where... Do it... No. Do you have the plan?
So Eldridge Ave... I can get up.
Okay. I just want to take... Yeah.
So when you came over the bridge from Wayham and you looked up there, the big house was there. That land came down closer to Bottom Oak Bay, but it also had an extension that went over in front of the other houses. They're going to take that L piece off and just leave the main lot with the house. Did he wake up?
Oh, that's all right. I'm here right now. You're on Zoom.
Is he on Zoom?
Oh, yeah. You can get right on.
Any... Guys want to look at this?
Yes. I believe my son gave a email as well.
Yep.
I know, I can't find it. That's the only thing, but...
What zone is that in? What zone is that in?
I think it's downtown Florida.
And they're taking this piece out right here. Okay.
Yeah. That's all I want to do.
It's raining here. They're taking this lot out so that he has access to the water. Let's... And they clean that up.
I think he's making that non-buildable lot so we can have access to the water.
Access to the beach, yep.
To the beach. That's the whole purpose of it.
Is Dawn on?
He said he was going to get right on.
Oh, okay.
So there's Bottom Oak Bay.
Mm-hmm.
It would be the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the big house.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I know the house.
So it's... Makes sense for them to take that and not leave it as part of this. It works for me. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. On the 81P, any other questions from the board? An entertaining motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve this, but second.
Doc? Any further comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Start with Dan.
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. All set, guys? Good luck.
Wait, I have the Mylar to sign.
Yeah. It's right here. Let me sign this Mylar, and you guys can take it with you.
Do you guys want it?
Sure. We kind of might need it.
Yeah. Yeah, you probably should.
I'll get Dawn back on this one. Oh, yeah. Someone will bring drinks.
Gavel got knocked over there first.
Yes.
He doesn't... Yeah. Yeah, it is. We need to make sure we do it right.
Do we have access to the beach, too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Only if I could put a dock there.
Oh, that's another story.
We can't speak to that.
That's another ballgame.
December 12.
Thanks for cleaning that place up.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was part of the project.
Yeah. I know. We've been watching it.
You're going to have to... You're going to let that dry, because otherwise, this panel will smudge in it. Because of the type of paper it is, it takes a while, so. Carry it gingerly.
Yeah, very gingerly.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys. We'll see you.
You want these? There you go. All right. Thanks.
Take care.
Nice Christmas. Application for amended site plan review, special permit number 132019B, 340 Main Street, map 20.4, parcel 6. The application is requested revised the traffic pattern from one-way to two-way for the 24 residential units located in the rear behind the mixed-use commercial building and for earth removal per zoning bylaw section 4400. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with offices in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. I'm sure you've seen me before here a few times.
A couple times.
Right. Sean, if you don't mind, can we just turn it to sheet three, just to give you a quick presentation why we're here tonight, and we'll open it for questions.
Is the electric company that's been down there all day long, and they're still down there?
Today?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I haven't been on it.
It's probably you guys messing up. No.
So just to give you a quick history of the property, we started this project back when Corinne was here, back in 2019. 2020, we secured a special permit to develop the front portion of the property, which is about one acre, for a mixed-use building, 6,000 square feet on the first floor, retail with services, a restaurant, and six apartments on the second floor. So that project was completed in 2022. Then we came here in 2023 to... For a proposal to construct 12 duplex buildings in the back for 24 units. And that was approved as a special permit. Then the owner had the opportunity to buy the lot to the west of the property. And again, that changed things a bit. We tried to merge the things, you know, the two designs together. And we came to this board back in September, I believe, for 328, which is the lot right to the west of 340. I believe, for 328, which is the lot right to the west of 340. And we proposed a single building, seven residential units, that was approved by this board. Part of that proposal, we had a new curb cut off of 328 that would be used also to access 340 rear. On the original proposal with 340, we had, if you remember, we used the existing curb cuts for the gas station. So, if somebody trying to access the property, they will have to go through the parking lot of the, of the gas station, and then they would have, they'll have to circle, come in from the west, and then go one way around. That would be sheet number four, I believe. If, if you don't mind, I have a, yes, so, so circulation would have been to come off the westerly driveway for the gas station, loop around, and then exit to the east from that existing driveway. And at that time, I believe, it was condition number six from that special permit stated that that has to be a one-way, in-one-way-out circulation, because I guess you don't want people to go back and shoot, get through the parking lot of the gas station trying to exit. Now that we have the existing driveway on 328, well, the proposed driveway, we thought we can, we can exit through that driveway without going through the gas stations. And if you recall, the, the gas sta, the underground fuel storage tanks in this area, there was some concern about that at that time, but we demonstrated that we can unload the truck without interfering with the driveway. But we thought this is a better design, safer for, and we're here tonight to request that you modify that condition number six to allow the circulation in the back to be two-way, but also, so it'll be two-way traffic from here on, so somebody can come in through here, come back this way, and exit through here without going through the gas station. But if you need to exit this way, this is a one-way only. I think that, we discussed that at the last meeting when we came here for 328. So, that's the, that's why we're here to modify that condition, and also since we didn't have the earth removal in the first special permit, and unfortunately, you know, there's, there's probably some major, major grading there to be done before we can get a building permit. I don't think we can get a building permit for a pad before we do the, the infrastructure, meaning, you know, the sewer, the wa, and then get the grading, at least the rougher grading on the road. So, we probably have at least a couple of months with grading, and we would like to start that work now with the earth removal. So, that's, those are the two requests for tonight. And again, nothing changed on what you approved for 340 rear in terms of the location or the houses or the number. It's just the traffic circulation now, it's a two-way rather than one-way as you stipulated under condition number six. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. And by the way, we had, last week, we did appear before the conservation for 328 for the work within the flood zone, and it was approved. So, we're on the right track. It's just, you know, it's taking a little time.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I, I was the reviewer with John originally, and then we did 328 as well. So, the, the traffic flow discussion came up during our discussion of 328. I think we actually thought that it was a good idea to change the traffic flow, just to point that out, that we actually kind of, you know, already thought about that. And then, in my discussion with Sean, we were just saying, you know, moving the earth, even though it's a slightly different order of doing things, it just seems to make sense to keep the project moving forward, as long as they're following all the, you know, conditions that, that we've set. And, you know, they've, they've shown themselves to be quite conscientious, so.
Okay. Doc?
I don't have a problem with changing it to two-way, but it seems like with the width of that road, changing it to two-way, now it becomes very sensitive to informal guest parking on the road itself. So, will you suggest signage, something like that? Just, you've got pull-off parking for some guests, but I could see if someone didn't get the memo and parked on the road in two-way traffic, that could be a problem.
No, I mean, that could be enforced probably with signage, but just to revisit the parking, I think I had with the original, at, at the last time, I had a table with, I have it here. So, just to give you an idea what the parking required and what we have provided, we are, overall, for the project, we have required 107, and we have parking of 146 plus 39. So, if I, if I break it all down, we have, just for that 340 rear, let me just find it here, 48 spaces. We provided 24 times two, that's for two each unit, and then we have eight spaces for guests. So...
Most of the time, it won't be a problem. I just, if someone does park on the road, it makes a little bit of a problem. Maybe signage.
Absolutely. If you want signage, we can put signage, no parking on streets or whatever.
That's all I have.
That could be a condition, that's fine.
I just want to say thank you, because what you're doing by keeping the residential separate from the commercial, and, you know, in the summertime, the gas station, plus now you have the food in there. So, it's kind of, it should cut down on confusion or if potential, you know, acts on the road first or whatever.
Unfortunately, we didn't have that opportunity before. That's why kind of this set us back a little bit, because we have to look at the whole project as one unit rather than three. We did it phase one, phase two, then 328, you can say phase three, but I think it does make it easier and safer.
Thank you. Anybody else? Corinne, anything? No?
No.
I, I agree. I think even though the drive for the upper units, the 24, even though that's down to two-way traffic, I think just through practice, people will end up going the way we suggested anyhow.
Yeah, I'm going to say that.
And going out the easterly driveway. I think it's just going to make more sense.
Yeah.
But the small parking lot that's down there, is, that's going to be servicing the new units, the seven new units that you're building, correct?
Not, not all of it, no. Just, just the, because we have some parking on the 328, but this is additional 12 parking spaces here for the, and this, the night parking spaces for this here. And also, if there's an overflow, again, we have actual parking spaces for those two.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed this project, and the applicant, 340 Main Street Born LLC proposes to amend special permit number 132019B to allow earth removal at property located at 340 Main Street, map 20.4, parcel 6. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is consistent with the Town of Born zoning bylaw section 4440, earth removal. Therefore, I move to approve site plan special permit number 132019B in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. Findings: The applicant proposes to modify condition number six of special permit number 1329A to change traffic pattern from one-way to two-way through residential development. The western driveway is to be used for entrance and exit, and the eastern driveway to remain exit only. Conditions: Financial surety provided for earth removal, estimated cost plus an assumption of 10% inflation. The surety shall be provided either through an escrow account, bond, or otherwise in the amount and form acceptable to the Town of Born Town Council. Two, defer to the fire department for adequacy of emergency access. All tier-one documents as outlined in the building code shall be provided to the Born Fire Department. Three, confirmation from the conservation agent that the proposal meets conservation regulations, which we already have. Four, defer to Born sewer commissioners for confirmation of sufficient wastewater capacity. Five, defer to the appropriate water district for sufficient water capacity. And then, you want me to add the signage to? Six.
Yes.
Provide signage noting no parking on the street.
Page two.
Oh, there is a page two? I'm sorry. Change that now. Six, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, an as-bill plan must be submitted to the planning board showing all appurtenances above and below ground. Seven, this plan is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Born. Eight, all prior conditions of the special permits recorded in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds shall remain in effect except condition number seven to be amended to read 10% of total dwelling units located on the site to be included on the Born Affordable Housing Inventory. Nine, this decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds slash Land Court Registry and a copy returned to the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Now, 10, provide signage on the road indicating no parking on the street.
Can I, are we discussing the...
Well, someone has to second it.
Right.
Second that, okay. Motion made and seconded. Now we can have discussion.
On the parking on the street, I'm just going to offer up maybe option, is no overnight parking? Because what if somebody has a party, a birthday party?
Right.
You know, if, that's really live parking, people go up and move the car. But if it's not overnight, you know, I'm just thinking that it's going to be an enforcement nightmare there, because they're going to be calling the town.
Right.
Because of the signs there. I think if you give them a little leeway, that if they haven't guessed, no overnight parking, maybe? Because 24 feet is a pretty wide road for, usually they have parking on one side. Maybe it's parking just on one side or something like that. I don't know.
I concur. I think the overnight parking is more, more better.
More better, yes.
More better.
I'm going to modify my condition.
You can modify it. No, it's fine.
Okay. I'm modifying condition number 10 so that it reads signage noting no overnight parking on the street. Does someone have to second that?
Jim can do it again.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion to amend, questions, comments?
Yes.
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 Dan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair votes yes. On the main motion, which has been made and seconded, again, a roll call vote. Corinne?
Yes.
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 Dan?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Well said. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Been a pleasure to work with you folks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wish I could do that.
I'm going to take this.
I opened there.
But I like, I like the fact that they're not in the business.
Yeah, no, I should think of works out better, the way it's come out, you know, with the original.
This guy always has his stuff.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, you know, I've been very impressed with them. I'm very curious to see how those come out.
Are you sure this is parking?
So, that's 24 minutes.
Yes, thirty. Did you guys come in a bus, or?
Separate vehicles, very bad for the environment.
There's only a few of you here, so.
Only a few of us. Hi, all. You read the public notice, or whatever?
The application for site plan review special permit 192021C, Two Kendall Ray Place, map 24.1, parcel 6. The application is a request for modifications to special permit 192021A and 1921B, 2021B, for the previously approved mixed-use development for building height, base residential density, and ground floor dwelling units per zoning bylaws section 2800, 2822, 2831.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Toccio. I represent Canal Cove Development LLC. Of everyone we brought tonight, I've got Tom Broderick and Chris King, who are in the second row over on the side. They're the principals of Canal Cove. I've got the architects, I've got Julie Bartlett is here, Reed Ennis from ZDS Inc., and then I've got Gabe Crocker, and then also Josh Green from Crocker Design Group. They're the civil engineers. And then, last but not least, I've got Ben LaFrance from Hawk Landscape Design. He should be in back with me somewhere. Thanks very much. We've been working hard on this with staff recently. We've been before the design review commission, which we got an approval on 1112. And then, we were just recently before the conservation commission, and we received an amended order of conditions on December 5. So, that's some of our recent work that we've undertaken. I've got in back with me some boards. It took us a while to put them up. Usually, when you have really nice-looking boards and a pretty project, you want to put them all up. So, they're all, they're all up here now. I'll start off, give you a brief overview. We're looking at four acres of land, give or take, at Two Kendall Ray Place. That's the core sub-district of the downtown district. So, as you all know, basically parallel to the canal. So, if we go past Town Hall down Perry, and then if we take a right, go past the vast maritime parking lot and pass the Hampton Inn, you've got the lot which is there, which will be on the south. And then, ahead of you to the west will be the park, the parkland that's actually owned by the town. This is, again, is a modification of site plan and also a special permit that was issued before to a different development group. This is something that was put together as a mixed-use, as a use under section 2820, and previously, the board had approved it for a concept with 167 apartments in two buildings with about 9,300 square foot of retail, excuse me, commercial, which would have been on the first floor. Two five-story buildings, and the first building, building one, which is up parallel to Kendall Ray, had parking which was situated underneath that, and that was the concept. Over time, that group, for whatever reason, wasn't able to make that a viable project, and it's been on the market. Canal Cove has it under agreement with its owners, and what they've done is they've put together a concept, basically repositioning the property in the marketplace similar. They've had some other projects recently, so they're very familiar with kind of what the lending scenario, what the marketing scenarios are now, and they have repositioned it so it's got 132 condominiums. So, it's a reduction from 167 dwelling units down to 132, and again, going from an apartment scenario to a condominium-owned scenario. This proposal will have, right now, we're holding it as 3,000 square feet of commercial slash restaurant first floor, and that's currently... They've had some other projects recently, so they're very familiar with kind of what the lending scenario, what the marketing scenarios are now, and they have repositioned it so it's got 132 condominiums. So it's a reduction from 167 dwelling units down to 132, and again, going from an apartment scenario to a condominium-owned scenario. This proposal we have right now, we're holding it as 3,000 square feet of commercial slash restaurant first floor, and that's currently the placeholder. I know that there'll be some questions about that, so I wanted we make a presentation of it, and then we can answer some questions and give you some updates on what's happening there. One of the questions that we had with the DRC, affordability, yes, so it's got a 10 percent affordability component, which is also included. And the 132 condominiums winds up being 51 bedrooms, 53 two-bedrooms, 29 three-bedrooms. Throughout putting this together, because it's gonna be a condominium, how they're positioning it, what they're doing is they're going to enhance the amenities that would be offered. So often, we see projects that don't necessarily get out of the ground. Subsequent developers come in and they try to kind of go down-market, they try to cut costs, et cetera. This group goes in the opposite direction. They've had a lot of success going with adding amenities to these different properties that are very attractive to people who are looking to purchase condominium setting. You'll see some details, but we're looking at a two-story clubhouse amenity, which is going to be added with pool, fitness. And on that, you'll get some more detail when we go through. Julie, we'll detail that building. And then overall, another component that you folks may remember is that there was about a 30-car parking lot, which was proposed to the west of the building, which was actually right on the town parkland that was there. So there was an entire design for that, a drainage structure, and subsequent to that town council in speaking with the town, determined that because it was parkland, that it couldn't be utilized for parking. That was something that our design team was able to get their hands around. They've eliminated the need for that parking. What they've done is through the design, is they've integrated that parking, pulled it onto the site. And you'll see how we did that with Building Two. And in doing that, we're able to eliminate all of that impervious. Likewise, that had an exposed drainage component, and engineers were able to really devise a vastly improved drainage system, which winds up having things subsurface. And they can, they can answer whatever questions you have on that. So that overall, they've been able to eliminate the number of parking, and then at the same time, they're being able to increase open space, recreational land. So they're able to push two items in very favorable directions, which would ordinarily seem to be, you know, kind of adverse to each other. But they'll go through some of what the changes were that put that together. Overall, there were 280 parking spaces before. That's now decreased to 269 spaces. And we can go through some of the parking numbers as to how that goes through. Sean's put together, you know, basically his planning report, which goes through all of the details. So, I mean, I don't think much jumps out. There were a few requests that we can go through. I think that we're able to satisfy the points that he brought up. He had some really good points. And we, given the time, because he turned the report over so quickly, we've actually had an opportunity to incorporate changes. So he can go through some of those. With that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to start and ask Julie to go through the overall building, explain the architecture, some of those components. Then what I'd like to do is I'd like to go and speak, have Gabe present on the civil aspects. And then finally, I'll ask Ben to go through some of the landscaping aspects. So we should be able to pull everything together for you. And then, of course, we'll be available to answer any questions that you've got.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Julie Bartlett. For the record, with ZDS Architecture and Interiors. We were actually part of this project for the approval process a few years ago, and we are here to, as Jeff mentioned, to present the revised design with the condo, condominiums, and the addition of the clubhouse. So I'll talk a little bit on these images, and then I'll, I'll pop to some plans. Building One and Building Two remain in, in concept in the square footage, but as Jeff mentioned, our unit count is reduced because they are larger units as they are condominiums. So Building One will have 86 units, and Building Two has 46, for a total of 132. And as he mentioned, there is now below-grade parking under each of those buildings, with the first floor raised, as previously designed, to being above the floodplain in this zone as well. There previously was, as you may remember, a large boardwalk around the first floor of Building One, which also was supportive of that almost 10,000 square foot of commercial space. We have reduced that commercial space to closer to 3,000 square feet and, you know, possibly more, as Jeff will mention a little bit further later. And in reducing, in making that decision, we also reduced the boardwalk. There's a few reasons for that. We also, because of the basement parking and the fact that it was condominium, we wanted to have it enclosed and not naturally ventilated, which was one of the reasons for the openings and the arches below the boardwalk before. So you'll see in this rendering that we're wrapping the basement now, sort of aligned with the footprint of the building, and we're wrapping it with a stone veneer instead of the arches that were previously designed. Do I not, can I not step away if the doom?
Yeah, we can. We can do it. Sure.
I'm sorry?
Do you want us to put the shared screen so the audience can see?
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you. I'm gonna, there's a lot of flipping, though. I apologize.
You know, I'm not sure.
Could Reed flip through for us?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Extra set of hands always helps.
So Reed, if you want to put on the overall rendering. I'll talk, as he's sharing the screen, I'll keep going. So what are the other, so as I was mentioning, the boardwalk reduces and is now sort of hovering on the northwest side of the plan. And one of the other things you'll see with the project is that, from a primarily concept massing perspective, we didn't change the architecture that dramatically, but we articulated the facades more since our la, since the time we were here a few years back. In which case, we modified the cladding around the commercial space to be a, that is a white lap siding, and that is to identify that zone as commercial, whereas the rest of the property, it's either commercial or an amenity-type public space. And the remainder of the cladding is a semititious, like, likely a semititious-type product that's either lap, board and batten, or a shake in a white light gray and darker gray on the tone of like a blue-gray tone that you'll see in the, in the renderings as well. The buildings, both Buildings One and Two had always had a mansard-style roof with some gable ends. We articulated that by modifying the fifth floor and stepping down the scale on both short ends of the building, which we think helped to just bring the scale of the entire property down. It also allowed for rooftop terraces for some of the more up penthouse-level type units that we'd have in that fifth floor. In the joint of the building on Building One, there is a, we previously had had a pedestrian open pass-through at the ground floor, which is, has been eliminated, turning this into a condominium project. It has turned into our lobby for the complex and specifically for this building. In Building One, I'll show, I'll share the plan of Building One for a minute. The ground floor, the major changes that happened here is, as we mentioned, is the reduction of the commercial space. And in the orange, you'll see the tenant, which is 3,000 square feet. The center orange is now our lobby, which is dedicated and secured to our condominium residents. And off of that, the red is any amenity space. So we have fitness or co-working lounge, clubroom. And then at the far left of the plan, you'll see a flex space, which we hope to find a tenant that can be a part of this commercial, but it may, we're not committing to that at the moment, and this is, potentially could be an expansion of an amenity space as well. In this plan, you can see how there's outdoor seating in front of that tenant and flex space, and that is where we've maintained that boardwalk and allowed for sort of a more dynamic approach at that northwest corner of the lot. As we proceed, so Building Two, again, not very many changes to the Building Two plan. If you want to switch to that, please. Thank you. We reoriented a little bit where our lobby entry is. Again, we have a small amenity, a cowork, likely a co-working in the lobby lounge, and, more units at this level, but we did add the basement lower-level parking in this building, 29 spaces in this structure. Both of our buildings will have a small, under 750-square-foot rooftop amenity for our tenants as well, which has an elevator and stair access to it for lounging and, for just the great, to offer the great views of the canal as well. The biggest change to the property is the fact that we've added a clubhouse as well. And so we have a few sheets to sort of describe this. So the clubhouse brings additional amenities to all of our residents and a pool, an enclosed pool gated area as well. The clubhouse has a clubroom and an event room, likely rentable opportunity for some of the residents for small gatherings, and, you know, some small changing rooms at the ground floor as well. And on the second level of this structure will be a larger fitness yoga studio and likely an amenity, like a golf simulator of some sorts. The concept of the architecture of this building, wanted to pull from what we've already designed on property without emulating what's there, as it is a two-story structure. So there isn't a mansard roof, but there is a gable with the swooping ends. We do, we did use a lot of the same materialities. So we have a stone base that wraps the building, some of the shake-style gray siding, a wraparound porch that is, from the front of the building, it sort of wraps into the back that faces the pool. And then some board and batten and white, white board and batten and paneling, articulating some of the more accent feature pieces on the structure as well. The, as Jeff was mentioning, by doing some of the reduction and moving some of the parking under Building Two, and the fact that we have 132 units instead of 167, the added green space we envision in the modification to some of the asphalt areas has allowed us what we envisioned to be likely some outdoor leisurely activities. Maybe there's bocce court, there's more amenities for our tenants that we think will be an added feature to this site. The rejected mansard. So as I mentioned earlier, if you want to pop to this, this, the larger, both buildings, we've reduced the mansard height. If you want to point to that for the viewers, thank you. We reduced the two ends of the mansard, which allows for these roof decks for specialized units in both ends. Some of our units do also have extended balconies as well. And I did want to mention, I'm sorry, I'm bouncing a little bit as well, the clubhouse is the only portion of the, any part of the buildings that is in the floodplain. So it is at grade and not elevated like the other two structures, which is just a component of our design. It'll be designed to breakaway walls and basically like on a structural system that allows for that building to still remain standing. So happy to answer any questions, or hand over to Gabe first. Thank you.
Gabe Crocker with the Crocker Design Group. So a lot of the, let's say, the vast majority of the site elements from the prior design remain and are incorporated into the, into the current design. So very similar layout, access points. We kept the same two access points on the two ends of the property, aligned with the driveway across the street and at the end here. Two-way circulation throughout with the, with the dual array parking bays in the parking lot through the rear. Access to the, to Building One remains as it was. There's a basement-level garage through the bottom of Building One, so we've got access in and out of both ends of that building. One of the, obviously, obvious elements that changed was the removal of the shared parking lot and drainage infrastructure over here. So we made up for that by effectively taking the parking that was there and putting it in the basement level of Building Two, and then providing an access point into that on this side of the building there. So we were able to accomplish that onsite inside the building footprint, so we were able to reduce, you know, the impervious area and amount of disturbance. Also, that eliminated the need for the drainage, the open basins and swale systems that were over here. From a parking standpoint, we've kept the same design with the 31 on-street parallel spaces out front. There's a total of 269 parking spaces. Thirty-one are out here, and at the balance, the 238 are in the site. Of that, 141 are in the surface lot, and the remaining 128, if I can do my math at this hour, are divided between the two basement-level garages. So we're compliant, more than compliant from the, from the parking ratio requirements on that end. One of the major upgrades is actually below ground. So we, we took a, took a stab at redesigning the entire drainage system. As soon as we didn't need the systems over here and we didn't have that impervious area, we looked to consolidate the systems that were here, shown here previously. I think there was a total of 11 underground drainage systems. We've got that down to five systems by consolidating two larger systems in the rear lots here. But one of the things we really wanted to accomplish is there were two, almost three, depending on how you count them, large underground systems that were proposed in Kendall Ray. So while we're obviously gonna be doing work in Kendall Ray to add that, eliminating the large deep excavation right down the middle of the road that, that was recently installed, it seemed like a good idea, and we had the opportunity to do it. So we were able to take that drainage, bring it in, and incorporate it into the redesign. One thing I want to mention on parking, we did receive staff comments that we hadn't designated loading areas. So our review of the code was that we need one for each 100 residential units, so that would be two for that, and then a separate one for the commercial, based on the mixed-use analysis. So we, we did revise the plans based on that to incorporate a larger space that meets those larger dimensions out front. So we've got one here associated with the commercial, we've got one here and one down here. So we've got a raid where they would make sense for the three buildings. Utilities, I guess from a, from a grading perspective, everything is pretty well the same. The site mostly hovers between the parking lots, between elevation 13, 14. Both buildings were originally designed with the basements at elevation eight and the first floor at 18. All of that remained the same. And we've got the clubhouse, as Julie said, at elevation 12 and a half, sitting there. So the majority of the site is, is pretty much at the same grades that were shown before. Utilities are straightforward. We provided separate services for each building. We've accommodated the restaurant with the grease straps, and obviously, we've added a third set of services for the clubhouse. I think that's the bulk of it on my end.
Bike rack.
Oh, that's right. We also had a comment to, to add a bike rack for the code, so we have added that bike rack out front as well. So we've got the bike rack out front. Obviously, that'll serve anybody coming in from the commercial component. There will also be, there's, we've got plenty of opportunity to also house bikes in both of the covered garages, because the residents will likely want to have their bikes in, covered inside the building. So that's accommodated in the buildings as well. The, yep, and we've, we've also maintained the, the design element of the walkway down through the middle with access into the amenity area and the clubhouse, and then continuing down, but we did have a comment that that'll stop at the, at our property line.
Last but not least, as Jeff said, or I like to say icing on the cake. Ben LaFrance with Hawk Design, we're the landscape architects on the project. And our, our goal of the landscape is really to create a setting for the property and the buildings. I'm just gonna move this over here so I can. So our, our goal is to really create a setting for the property and the buildings through the use of plantings that will create interest year-round through their bloom times, branching structures, and mature sizes. For this property, we've utilized all hardy drought-tolerant plant species, which will reduce the need for supplemental irrigation as the plants begin to grow and acclimate to their climate. And we've also located them on the property specific to their sun and shade growth requirements. So, you know, utilizing that, we've best located the plant material throughout the site. site. We propose shade trees, which are shown in these larger green symbols throughout the property, such as red maples, London plane trees, we have some honey locusts along the street frontage, building facades and throughout the parking areas, which will reduce the, the shade, which will reduce the heat island effect in the parking lot and also tend to soften the building facades throughout, reduce some of the massings of the buildings. Along Kendall Ray Place, we have proposed street trees of London plane trees, have a very interesting mottled bark to them. They will really help to define that street edge and also reduce some of the massing of the building as you're driving along the street here. Adjacent to our boardwalk here that enters the commercial spaces Julie mentioned, we have proposed welcoming plantings of broadleaf, there's some inkberry in there, there's some hydrangea in there, there's some ornamental grasses. So again, kind of an evolving bloom time of those. The inkberry will create that evergreen for us in the winter so that it won't just be sparse with some, you know, branching structure in there, as well as the service berry, which are these purple symbols here, so they get a little bit taller. All of these will kind of come together to really create a nice welcoming arrival zone here to our commercial space that we have and then also provide a nice visual as you're sitting in that space. You know, we envision possibly a restaurant or something like that, some cafes seating outside, so that will again help to create some interest as you're on that terrace. Along all of the remaining building facades as well, we've carried that planting concept through using species such as the Viburnums, Inkberry, Hydrangea, there's some summer sweet in there, some ornamental grasses, so really creating this great palette of material that constantly evolves with the seasons. Our clubhouse located here on the site, as was earlier pointed out, is really the hub of activity for our residents. The exterior amenities will include a swimming pool, a large pool area terrace. We also have a resident terrace space on the side here that we envision having some grills on, maybe an outdoor gas fire element there to extend the seasons, really acting as this hub of activity, a hub of exterior activities for our residents. And then to the west here, we have this nice open space here, nice big lawn space. We envision, as Julie pointed out, potentially a bocce court in there, nice place to kick a soccer ball around, maybe throw a ball, that kids are just sit on the lawn and relax and enjoy the outdoors. I will mention that we received some comments earlier this week from the design review board, Mr. O'Connor, I think most of those came from you. And I think we've addressed most of those in these recent plans that we submitted last night. I think you probably received them this morning. If I could just take a minute to run through some of those, I believe the first comment we had was, you know, is there a way to add some more trees in here to create more shade? And I think we've done that. We previously had, I think it was seven trees in here and as you could see, we've, we've got quite a few more. We planted them in the end islands, tightened them up in the middle and then put one on the end of that building, really liked that, so you get that tree right at the end of the building, taking out some of the, the height of the building there as you approach it. I think the second comment was the lighting and the light fixture that we originally proposed. It was requested that we maybe take a look at some of the building lighting aesthetics and try to match that, which I feel is that we have. I think you would agree that that is more in keeping with that building light. I will mention that we are going to need to take a look at maybe some of the light locations in this area where we'd add those trees, just to make sure that there's no conflicts with trees. We might need a slight adjustment to those, but you know, light levels obviously will want to stay the same for our residents, the security of our residents. And lastly, in terms of irrigation, we do intend to have an irrigation system installed onsite, supplied by a well. As was mentioned earlier, all of the plantings are hardy to the local climate as well as the sun shade condition, so you know, we expect over time as those start to mature in place, you know, we can obviously reduce some of that irrigation requirements because we've got all of that hardy material that will kind of sustain itself over time. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
Thank you, Ben. And I just wanted to point out for the members who are tuning in by Zoom and for also any of the public, what is showing graphically on the screen is the version of the landscape plan as of a couple of days ago. So the board that we're showing, you can see how it's much more dense with the plantings. So I don't know if that shows on the camera, but the changes have been made to what's showing right now on the screen and the board that we have here that we've also submitted, it's got those additional changes to it as well. So there is a difference there. With that, I think we're prepared to respond to any questions that you folks have and give them to us and I'll, I'll direct, I'll answer what I can and if I need expert.
Okay. I want to go straight to Doc from the design review committee. Any issues there? You just squared everything away?
You addressed pretty much all of our issues. It looks pretty good. The reason I question closely on the irrigation is the town's been burned before on nice planting designs where there was not a provision for irrigation. So the native plants are great, the establishment period, we want to make sure they all make it through the guarantee period. We've had, we've had droughty summers and there are other examples not so very far away with disastrous outcome. So that's good. So the irrigation system will be a formal irrigation system in bed, not hose bibs and yard hydrants?
Right.
All right, very good. I think it's a nice job.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on the board?
I think it's a good job.
No?
Yeah.
I think it's good. I just, my only, I had a couple of concerns, but just off the top of my head, one is I looked at the total number of units that you're providing for three bedrooms, which comes out to 29, was it?
Correct, 29.
29. So that's a possibility of another, possibility of another 60 kids that are going to be possibly educated in the town born school system. That's something that we all have to think about. Not, we want, we want, we want people, we want families, families work well, but I'm just trying to say that, you know.
Right. And we, we deal with that, we actually deal with that quite a bit.
And every town you probably go to.
Yeah, we do. And what's funny is some, some towns as part of an overall, some towns in their, their bylaws have an overall economic analysis, they run through everything. It's a, you know, net tax, you know, et cetera. You go through, you know, ambulance calls, it's extremely, extremely detailed. When we do children, potential children in school systems in mid-rise buildings, the numbers are astonishingly low compared to what you expect. We've had towns where we've been told you need to go meet with the school department and meet with the transportation department, get everything going, and I, there are several examples where we sit down and they say, there's a place across, over across the street, it's three times as the size, we have six kids, like it's, so with that said, I would expect that this would be no different. It's, there's just something about the mid-rise when you've got an elevator, it's a, it's a different buyer that comes in. The other thing too is the three bedrooms are very attractive to people now because that extra bedroom becomes like an office, particularly now in the post-COVID world. So that's, that's what we're seeing. Of course, we can't do anything to affect those numbers, but if it gets, you know, if it gives kind of a experience-based check on it, that is what we see and it's been like that for several years. I see it all the time.
Right. Liz?
Yeah, I, I happen to be on the library feasibility committee as well and we actually were discussing this because I was saying to them, there's a lot of units coming down the pike that we might want to discuss how that's going to work. But in the course of that discussion, we, we were talking about the fact that the schools are actually underutilized at this point, so there's plenty of space for growth.
Right. I realize that there's plenty of space for growth, I just wanted to bring that out.
And the flip side of that is the silver tsunami. That's, so we were hearing, you know, 10 years ago, you know, projected, you know, child growth dropping and everyone was waiting for it and now it's, it's a reality. So we, our group just finished the 55 and over project that'll be done next week, we're getting our certificates of occupancy and the town, just they had such a need and it's a town where we've done a lot of projects and they said, can the next one get some of our seniors? And so.
Yeah, Bourne is a little different than the rest of the Cape in that it has a slightly younger profile and I think that we, we like the multi-generational aspect of that, so.
The diversity is, it makes for a healthy community, really does.
Jim, I just, I mean, I like, your presentation was very nice. I mean, you came to the table, you did your homework. I had the opportunity to visit a place similar to this down in New Jersey. We stopped at my sister-in-law's and spent a week there. The whole week I saw four kids.
It's, yeah. It's not what people think. Yeah, it's, you expect a lot, it just doesn't, it doesn't play out in reality that way. And look at school buses, everyone thinks there's going to be a line of kids, you know, one or two. And it's also family dynamics, there's, there are a lot of, a lot of things at play. There's something about the multi-level, these, these types of mid-rises that just, they, they don't attract a lot of, a lot of kids.
Corinne?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I, you answered one, who was your targeted audience? And I see empty nesters, I see snowbirds, them coming down there, I don't see a lot of children there. Of course, we know there probably be some because we know grandparents are taking on their, their grandchildren.
Not all senior, but also, I mean, this, that's the other thing with the amenities, the co-working space, what they find in other buildings is you're able to hit price points where it makes sense for people who perhaps grew up in the area, they can, they can go, they can live closer to the area because their jobs might be somewhere further away, but now they can work from home three days, four days. So that's really changed the dynamic. So that's, that's another reason for the amenities, whether it's the, the yoga space, et cetera. People want to, people want to move, they want to be on property. Being close to downtown is a huge attraction and then being able to do things onsite, particularly the pool. And then I don't know if we've mentioned, Ben had mentioned like some, some gas fire pit amenity, we'll have barbecue grills, things like that, so that people can actually grab burgers and, and go on down and, and cook something. That is something which is featured at other properties that they have and you got a question might be, well, who's going to bring the hamburgers down and cook them on a community grill? And the answer is a lot of people.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
That was another question. What is, can you name a project that you guys have done? We've had some issues in this area by previous projects that didn't turn out so well in the town. Spent a lot of time and energy chasing those developers. So, I mean, I would just kind of like to look at another project that you guys did.
Which one would you say, Aronot or?
Aronot, Helix, Cornerstone.
Yeah. So the closest ones, right, Aronot, which would be on Route 18 in Waymouth, Helix, which is on Washington Street in Waymouth, and then Cornerstone, which is the 55 and over, which is at the corner of Pleasant and Washington Street. Those are all on numbered highways in Waymouth. They are direct.
So you have three projects in Waymouth that you've done?
There's three that are probably the most three recent.
In the last four years, and if you reference those names, you should be able to find a website for them. We don't own the Aronot or the Helix anymore, but you'll still see the websites, you can see them.
Okay.
That one on 18 is right near the hospital.
Right.
Fairly close to it. Yeah. Across from the old shoe factory in that general area.
Helix, Aronot, and the third one?
Is Cornerstone, which is, that's the 55 and over, that, that's going to, like, we're getting our certificates of occupancy tomorrow. So we're going through all our life safety, that's why Mr. King showed up late, he's been running around with the fire department, passing all his tests. And yeah, I mean, it's just as far as lease up, you know, it's, it's just, it's been very, very, the great, great buildings, feedback's great. And we're literally talking about towns that say, hey, such and such a land might be available, like to see, you know, because people like to see builders who actually get in, permit, build them, rent them out and, or sell, you know, as it is, and they're successful projects. And in those instances, you know, our, the core team that you're seeing here tonight, we're, you know, we're the same folks to do them.
My other question is, these are condos and we have the affordability element that goes along with that. What we've seen in the past is that condos struggle with the fees for the affordability. I don't know if you've looked at that, because the condo itself is affordable, but the fees are not. So I'd really like to, have you talked to the housing partnership at all?
We have not. We've done, we've done other projects, I've done other projects with affordability component and they've got some indexing on some of the fees. So it has to do with like with the local housing.
I can actually speak to the fees. The HOA fees are determined by the percentage interest in the common area and the percentage interest is determined by the value. So one condo is 800,000, another one's 200, one would be 8%, 2%. So your fees will be, and with the value you're paying for the affordability.
So, babe?
Okay. Because that happened to one of the projects down the street, is that the town had to step in and purchase some of those properties and buy them down because the people couldn't afford the fees. That was a smaller project and the fees were higher and it was more to maintain, so I just wanted to, you know, make sure that those stay affordable.
Yeah, we usually see an indexing on, on that that comes through and it sounds like Mr. Broderick's talked specifically about, you know, how that percentage hits. Yeah, we've, I've not, and I don't know the experience down here, up a little further to the north, the affordable projects that, that happen just wind up, you know, success, you know, they're in there, everyone's, you know, abiding by, units look the same, et cetera. And they just, it's almost like what Ben would say, they grow in, no one knows, you know, any distinction winds up being a really nice, you know, nice fit. They winds up being recorded with the deeds, the affordability component, the requirements with respect to resale. So they've, they've seen it coming and going and they've got all the loopholes covered. So it winds up protecting the, you know, your protected subsidized housing inventory.
Yeah. The only other thing that I was thinking about, and I haven't looked at the site plans really close because they're kind of small on, on here, but I was thinking about a, a bus shelter or something because the, you know, bus goes down that street and if, you know, people want to go downtown or go to someplace else, the Walmart or wherever, have you considered about putting a, you know, a shelter, a bus shelter or something?
We, we hadn't. What we've got is, we've got the 31 spaces that are in Kendall Ray, which in effect mirror what was approved before. So there was no discussion, there's really not been any, an ask with respect to, with respect to that.
Just a thought.
There is, there is one down at the Mass Maritime.
Okay.
Parking lot, so.
Yeah, and the parking lot there is just, that's the one to the east that's just on the other side of the driveway that goes to that Hampton Inn. Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I like the project, I like the building design. The original design, you said, was by somebody else? I did not like that one at all. I think you brought a lot of character, I liked the materials that are being used, the landscaping. Good job.
This winds up being an upgrade. I think, I think, I'm going to speculate based on the design that it was probably more of a developer-driven constraint on the design, because these folks looked at it and they were like, they just, that's why I asked Julie to talk about the shoulders being knocked down. We were on that call when all of this came together and there was the original building, someone would look at that and say, this is approved, that's great, don't change anything. And they came in and they said, how can we make this better? And Julie was just saying, we could, we could knock this down, we could soften the corners, we could, we upgraded the materials, it's just, it's a design process, it's a value proposition and it's also the fact that with the condominiums, you've got people who are actually looking at it and they've got to make that big decision. Am I going to get a mortgage? Am I going to buy? Am I, am I going to invest my, myself in this? As opposed to, you know, rental product tends to be more transient and people don't sweat the details. So this is, this is all the reason with the amenities, et cetera, it's all to capture. It's all to capture the people that want to own here and see the value. Thank you. Great, great questions.
Dan, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Kevin, this project, I think, is a tremendous project for the town. And I think they did a great job improving what was already was already there. I'd also like the the increase on the radius on Kendall Ray alongside 218 Main. It frees that radius up. It used to be really tight. That improves the site work, that whole road work tremendously. We're also looking to try and for the commercial component, they've got from 9,300 square feet down to 3,000 square feet. I know they're trying to work on trying to get a restaurant. But I think I think it's one of the biggest concerns that we have is to try to get for the special permit, a commercial component in there or try to get a restaurant. I know retail might not work so much, but I think a restaurant would be a great asset for the community. And trying to look at where they have the boardwalk on the front north-facing side along Kendall Ray. Maybe think about putting a boardwalk along the west and the south section. That would be the view to the open space into the canal if they were ever to put out those seating. That'd be one of the concern. Other than that, I think it's a fantastic project.
Right, and I'll I'll actually follow up on what Dan suggested. Since this went before the design review committee, you know, there were questions about potential restaurant going in, wrapping on the boardwalk. And what we've done is we show a possible flex space now, which which, you know, winds up being something that we've segregated. And to the extent that we're able to locate, you know, a restaurant user that would be viable here. It would be our intent to come in. I would envision like a minor modification to come in. We've got enough of excess parking that I already know that we could park that as a restaurant and still have excess parking. So we've got a little, you know, we've factored in that we can do it. And in which situation, if we were, say, for example, we're to wrap around, then we'd look at, you know, what we could do as far as, you know, exterior, you know, changes or whatnot to be able to fit that space. So we're doing our best to be responsive to comments, understanding, because the original concept was, oh, you know, wouldn't this be great for a restaurant? The market's, at least for now, a little tighter than we had anticipated. So we're doing what we can to permit it as was filed, but now incorporate this potential flex space. And if you've got any questions about that, I know that the owners have had conversations with, you know, different local folks. And, you know, but that's that's good. That's that's how it's going to start. We don't have a permitted project yet, so this is about the best we can do. But we also psyched out all of the parking again. So we've got an excess, even if all of that were to be converted to a to a restaurant use. I will also say that super helpful Janet Sean talked to us about the sewer allocation, which was about to expire when we met. So I drove the speed limit back to my office. And and the the office of selectmen, you know, acting as the commissioner, they've been great. So what we did is we went through, we we readjusted the numbers. Surprisingly, they're very similar because the bedroom count's very similar. But what we did do was we carried along a similar number for potential seats for a restaurant. So if that's a possibility, we'll have had the allocation for that. So we're doing what we can to try to see the playing field and not not paint ourselves into any into any corners here. And then finally, one of the things that came up with the DRC meeting was that we had a we had a pedestrian connection down directly to the canal, right, Liz will remember, crossing over a piece of town property. And there were questions about the Army Corps and, you know, can that really happen, et cetera? So what we've done is we have eliminated that. And then through the sidewalks that you'll see the painted sidewalks, we've got one of the sidewalks that goes over to the west, which will, when built, line up with one of the existing paths there. So to the extent that, you know, we can set the table for that connection, that's something we can certainly do. I think that the town, I'm going to speculate, in the future, the town's going to see this all of a sudden because more people are going to be using the park. And usually when we do things like that, it gets a little bit of town interest. And then there's, you know, there's there's some interest in doing what you can to, you know, connect different, you know, amenities. So I wouldn't be surprised if that happens. We will do what we can to get that done. And then finally, one of the review memorandum questions was whether we could locate some of the drainage in. There's a portion of cul-de-sac, which is there. We've submitted a legal memorandum. The road that comes down and intersects with Kendall Ray, the one that comes off of Main, that's a private way that was put in 1950. And there are rights that to pass and repass by the property that we're talking about today. There are many land court cases that interpret the statute that has to do with private ways to allow for the placement of utilities under the private way. And utilities have been repeatedly interpreted as including subsurface drainage, et cetera. It even goes so far FYI to include septic systems. Wow. But in in this instance, we're able to have the drainage components. We've submitted a full legal memorandum to you folks, so you've got that as well.
Yeah, we just saw that recently at the last town meeting. A private residence in Monument Beach and the septic system is actually underneath the public way because there's no other place to put it.
Right.
Worcester Ave, at the end of Worcester Ave, so.
Yeah, and and I'll say the difference on the Gabe undersold it a little bit. The upgrade on the solutions here, because there were significant drainage components underneath Kendall Ray, which, you know, you don't want to be ripping up beautiful new roads, you know, too much in their lifetimes. So for him to be able to go in, revisit the drainage and really put a lot of time in to be able to consolidate all the drainage systems onsite, it's a big upgrade.
Right.
Big upgrade.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, David.
Go ahead. I just want to carry forward a point Dan made about the restaurant space. I agree that I think this is really a frontier for any kind of commercial use. But the restaurant use, I'd really like to see succeed.
Yep.
And physically, having it near the west end of the building offers a number of possibilities. You have a you have a view shed coming down Kendall Ray that signage may help. Exposure to the west and, God forbid, exposure to the south adds more seasonality to your outdoor. You know, adds a liveliness to it.
Railroad bridge, sunsets, yeah, we we that's why, I mean, we had we had the choice, where's it going to go?
Too close, too close to the center of building. All your outdoor space is on the north.
Well, we'll we'll see where we'll see where it winds up.
Because I just think it could really enliven the approach to the building.
We've, yeah, so I don't disagree with anything that you said. It's exciting. We and and several several people in town have really talked about the advantages of that, which we understand. We have to do the work to match private entrepreneurial interest to to match up with that. So some conversations have happened and, you know.
I think this conversation may be on the town side, too, because some of the stuff is a substantial ask and so the town is going to look for a benefit. And I don't know, should we consider a buy-down if there is to make a market for such a use? Is something we should not push off the table?
We, well, I don't know how that would manifest itself.
I'm not sure either.
We've got the 10% right for now, right? We're coming back in on something previously approved, et cetera. We've got the 10% component. I think we responded to everything. If in the future, the town, chambers of commerce, I missed, you know, Miss Oliver during the DRC. I know she's got the the chamber connection. Any any assistance, any connections? Some people have already put us in touch with some people. Some of the feedback was, I'm up, you know, I'm up to my neck here. Life's good. I'm running a great business, et cetera. That's sometimes perceived as they're busting at the seams. They need to bust out and go, you know, have another second place. It's going to be an operator-by-operator perspective. But we came into this thinking, wow, what a great place for a restaurant. That's that's super. It's not yet it's not yet manifesting itself in the marketplace. We also don't have a permitted project yet, so we can only dance with folks so much.
One of the little worries is is, and I'm fuzzy on the governance, at a certain point, you want to hand off to a homeowners association. If that space is not spoken for when it's handed off, how does that complicate marketing the space and so on? And my depth of knowledge in that is not very deep.
So that's, okay, I appreciate that and that's an excellent question. The reason one of we made it as a flex space now. So what that does right now is it kind of placeholds some of that piece down there on the west end, which isn't necessarily programmed for anything. It's not necessarily parked for anything. So it kind of placeholds it for a while, which doesn't do anything to upset your ability to approve this as presented. So all the parking numbers, everything, all all fits. This is an approvable project. But based on the comments that we received at the DRC and then thereafter, what we've done is we kind of put this placeholder piece in. So to answer your question, if it doesn't, a thousand feet of that could become, you know, yogurt plate, you know, whatever, coffee shop. The flexibility is there. If ultimately at the end, you know, they've got to make a decision whether it's going to be programmed into the commercial space or programmed as part of, you know, expansion of the, you know, the the work space for residents, et cetera. That's going to have to be a question at some point before I have to or our other councilors to drop or draft all the documents.
I'll I'll answer that more specifically because that's what I'll be doing. From a marketing standpoint, we're not going to show that as a common amenity. That's why it's labeled tenant. And like space.
That's for the TV. So, yeah, keep it over there.
We don't want a potential unit owner to think that's going to be common amenity space. So we're going to take that out for marketing purposes. The final decision will be when you record the condominium documents. And you actually have to have a ground floor plan. That'll probably be 18 months from now. I'm hoping between now and then, we can find a user for the property. I just can't go out too aggressively in the market on a property that I don't own and a property that's not permitted. I think it's a great place. I think it's a great location and I think we will get somebody. That's helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? I just had, one of my favorite subjects is winter. If we get some snow, where's it going? Are you going to take it out of the parking lot? You're going to spread it on the lawn, fill up the pool?
So from a practical perspective, we, you know, for the smaller storm events, usually gets plowed right to the perimeter of the spaces and garbs. Starts to get more than that. The good news is we're over the minimum required number of parking spaces. So there'd be an opportunity here in a really bad storm to be able to designate a few spaces in different areas operationally and to pile it up. And obviously, if it gets too bad, you know, residents want their spaces, it'll have to get hauled off. But so I think we've got with the amount of landscape areas around, the amount of parking we have, we've got we've got plenty of options for where that stuff can go.
Yeah, we've got a southern exposure on that side.
Right.
There's a lot. There are a lot of pluses with respect to the layout.
Yep. Well, let's see, the other thing I had. So you've other projects, you've you've sold them off up in Waymouth and whatnot. What is your plan with this? Management company? You're going to try to sell it off?
Yes, we're going to sell these as individual condominium units and there will be a management company in place. We're not set up for property management. We have not decided on what firm we'll use. There'll be some concierge services in the lobby area, so it won't be a mom and pop property management company. We just haven't got to that part. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, not even a shovel on the ground, so or a permit, so, right. Okay, those are some of the little issues that I was thinking about. Anybody else on anything? I I think you've come a long way. It's been great working with you folks. And, you know, I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, you'll find a tenant for the restaurant area. I think it would enhance it for the the residents of the two buildings as well as for the neighborhood, so. But again, I understand the restaurant business since COVID has kind of taken a downturn, so.
The other the other perspective is once, once it's approved in the newspapers and online, get get hold of these renderings. You're a restaurant operator and that's, you know, so we don't we don't yet, there's nothing really to show. It's very much a blind item until.
Until they start to see it, right.
They might come begging for a space.
Do you think we talked before the stone veneer on the bottom, is that dark? Dark stone? It's not going to be a light gray or anything, is it?
No, it's actually, it's intended to be a mixed tone.
Okay.
It's in there somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, I think I saw it, but I just.
Right, there you go. Thanks. So you can see on the, it's a sample material page, we have a stone veneer that's sort of a local, you know, multi-tone gray, brown, not like a flat singular tone. And it's to complement the context of New England and and the the other sort of like warmer gray tones and white that we have in the building as well. We don't envision this as like a very blue, 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 gray or dark gray building, but sort of something.
No, it just the reason I ask that is we saw it in a school that the town built and another building that was built in town. And they went with a light veneer on the bottom. And of course, you got bark mulch and everything else down there and it splashes up and it gets stained and then it looks like hell. So if you go with a darker stone on the bottom, it usually works out. And this is a mixture of stone colors, so I think that.
We tend to lean darker than lighter because of what you're talking about, but we don't like so dark it's singular tone. So we like that text, that sort of.
No, I like the mixture of.
Tone, texture feel. Actually, the veneer that was used on the project in Waymouth that's wrapping up now is quite a nice stone that we may work with the same vendor on. May. We'll see.
Okay, and and again, that goes along with the irrigation that's close to the building. It splashes up on the building and it starts to look like hell.
Certainly.
And and from the projects that you've done up in Waymouth that I've seen already, you guys do a great job. So looking forward to you guys doing a super job here in town, so. Okay, anybody else? I'm going to entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we adjourn. No, adjourn?
Don't you want to get official project for us?
There's lobster rolls.
Okay. Dan's not here, so, Mr. Vice Chairman, would you make the motion and read the draft? And we're going to add these.
Mr. Chairman, I review this project in the applicant canal code development LLC process, development of existing vacant land into mixed-use property located at two Kendall Ray Place, map 24.1 parcel six. Project is located in a downtown district, core sub-district, and it is allowed to use under section 2820. As the chairman, based on the planning board's review of this exhibits, testimony of the applicant, expert witnesses, and the record of proceedings, the planning board has found that the project is consistent with the town town of born zoning bylaws, section 1230, site plan, special permit, section 1331, special permit criteria. Special permit number 19-2021C meets a criteria for special permit of the following. A, pedestrian vehicular flow and safety has been met. Utilities and other public services are adequate. The property and other buildings have adequate utility connections from from the Kendall Ray Place. C, impacted areas to natural environment will be revegetated. The impact impact upon nearby development premises is minimized and commercial abouters may experience minor impacts such as as noise during construction. experience minor impact such as noise during construction. E, the proposed building is visually compatibility with its surroundings. F, there is a positive impact on the town's need for year-round housing. Therefore, I move to approve the site plan and special permit number 19-2021 in accordance with the following findings, terms, and conditions. The applicant seeks modification of the site plan slash special permits number 192021A and number 192021B for proposed modification to the previous approved mixed-use development at the property. This application, number two, this application is being reviewed pursuant to section 1230 site plan review, section 2800 downtown district, all applicable sections. Section 2820 mixed-use development, section 2827 special permit criteria, section 2840 performance and functional standards, section 3450 lighting, and then section five, I believe, defines definitions, and section 3100 lowland regulations. The site is located within the AE flood zone, EL 16, and the work must comply with lowland regulations. Three, the parcel consists of 177, 515,000 square feet, 4.07, whatever the AC.
Acres.
Oh, acres. In the downtown core, the sub-district of downtown district, the parcel is part of a subdivision created in 2017 under the regulations of downtown district for the purpose of mixed uses, including residential and commercial. The parcel also lies within the growth incentive zone, a designation of the Cape Cod Commission. Therefore, the project is not subject to the threshold of the Cape Cod Commission for a development of regional impact. Four, the applicant proposes to modify the previously approved mixed-use project to decrease the number of dwelling units from 167 rental units to 132 condominium units. Five, the applicant proposes to modify the previous approved mixed-use project to decrease the square footage of the commercial space from 9,390 square feet to 3,000 square feet. Six, the applicant proposes to modify the previous approved mixed-use project to decrease the number of parking spaces from 280 to 269. This will also increase the amount of open space and recreational space. Seven, the applicant proposes to modify the previously approved mixed-use project to add amenities for residents, including a poolhouse, pool, and patio area. Eight, the proposed project is a mixed-use development and is allowed use under section 2820, table DTD-1 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, this permit is subject to all rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Born. Two, all work authorized under the approval shall be in accordance with the application's supportive materials and testimony of the owner and its representatives. Three, all findings, terms, and conditions of the previous approval of the SPR, SP number 19-2021A, number 19-2021B, recorded at the Bonsville County Bonsville Registry of Deeds, shall continue to remain in effect until revised and approved by the planning board. Four, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, an as-built plan must be submitted to the planning board showing all pertinences above and below ground. Five, the decision shall be recorded at the Bonsville County Registry of Deeds, Land Court Registry, and a copy returned to the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Six, emergency access and vehicle turnaround as per the fire department, all tier-one documents as outlined in the building code shall be provided to the Born Fire Department. Knox box or Knox padlocks required to ensure fire department access to the property. Seven, defer to the appropriate water district for adequacy of water supply. Eight, construction vehicles access to the site is permitted from Kendall Ray Place via Main Street only during site cleaning, during site cleaning and construction, clearing and construction. The developer will be held responsible for directing all construction and delivery vehicles to approach the site using Perry Avenue.
Not using Perry Avenue.
Not using.
Not using Perry Avenue.
I knew that one.
Yeah, I know. You're not getting in there. Number nine, grain adjustments and/or not construction licenses as determined by the select board. Number 10, ground lighting adjustments and parking lot to be shown on as-built.
That should say town council.
Yeah, select board and/or town council.
And/or town council.
That's an item number nine.
Right.
Because the town council's the one that brought up before that area next to the park, so, okay. There is a second, second from Liz. Any further comments from board members on, Corinne?
Yeah, this was approved before. Were there any other conditions about affordability?
Yes, 10% affordable.
No, but I mean, as far as location of the affordabilities, the deed restriction, how many do they need to start out with?
No, it has, well, do we have the old special permit decision?
The old special permit, I think we refer them to meet with the.
Housing partnership and trust.
I would use as a general, just to get a plan, you know, a sign off by the housing partnership before the occupancy.
And they have to be scattered about. They can't be all in one little corner.
Because it has to be a lottery plan, there has to be some kind of marketing plan.
A regulatory agreement, all that stuff.
So why don't we add that in then, number 11?
A general condition to meet with the housing partnership.
It's either in A or B. It's in special, this is the third amendment to it, so it's either in the first one or B. I think it's in the first one.
Did we adopt those in the conditions there?
Yes, it said that the previous conditions shall remain in effect.
And just one, once, previous conditions, I believe, included the 30 spaces on the town land. I just want to make sure that that's eradicated.
That's gone.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the reference to the agreements.
Yeah, a little housekeeping.
Yeah, I think that's confusing.
Anybody else on the motion? Okay. Just going to call a roll call vote. I'll start with Mr. Doucette. Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. Liz?
Yes.
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 Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Great job.
And have you started talking to the lady down the street about buying her boats and stuff?
Thanks.
You guys are awesome.
Thank you. Nice to work with you.
Can't wait for you guys to get going.
Good job. Great job.
Thank you. Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice work.
Thanks, very nice design. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do. Okay, great. So. They'll probably be down there tomorrow. Caping trees and stuff.
When I came in earlier, I thought it was.
Okay, folks. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.